Alex.
Motion to adjourn from executive session.
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, thank you. Okay, we will move into our regular session then, and so ask the roll call again.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mr. Ellerby?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Here.
Mayor Snively?
Here.
If you would like to join us, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, thank you. We'll move now to public participation, and it is a treat for me to read the following proclamation. Whereas Oxford has always embraced the many cultures and peoples that make our country so diverse, and Hispanic Latino-Americans are one of the fastest-growing groups in the country. And whereas as a result of their determination, intelligence, and hard work, and perseverance, Hispanic Latino-Americans have contributed immensely to the growth of our country, helping to shape the character and future of the state. And whereas the cultural, educational, and political influences of Hispanic Latino-Americans can be seen and appreciated in all aspects of our life, from farmworker struggles for housing and equal wages, to incredible and gifted artists, vibrant businesses, music, and community festivals. And whereas the Hispanic Latino-American community has a long and important history of commitment to our nation's core values, and the contributions of this community have advanced the city of Oxford and our country's expansion of intercultural relations of diverse-minded individuals, excuse me, civically engaged toward building inclusive, just, and sustainable civil societies. During National Hispanic Heritage Month, we celebrate the many achievements of Hispanic Latino-Americans and recognize, excuse me, their contributions to our country. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the spirit and accomplishments of Hispanic Latino-Americans everywhere, to honor those achievements, the Congress, by public law of 100-402 as amended, has authorized and requested the President to issue annually a proclamation designated September 15 through October 15 as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Now therefore, I, William B. Snively, Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, do hereby proclaim September 15 through October 15, 2023, as National Hispanic Latino-American Heritage Month in the City of Oxford, and I urge all citizens to join me in celebrating the significant contributions of Hispanic Latino-Americans in our country by participating in the activities and events planned for this important occasion. And I know that I have someone here who can accept it. Maybe you'll... The Unidiversity Festival is coming right up, so...
Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be here tonight. This year is super special. We are celebrating 20 years of Unidiversity in Oxford, Ohio. Twenty years ago, no by coincidence, I also came to Oxford, trying to figure out if Oxford was going to be home for us. And I'm so proud to say that Oxford has welcomed us. Today, we are around 3.5% of the population of Oxford. We are in every single layer of the structure of this city, from here, in the governmental system, our local businesses, our students in Talawanda, in Miami University. And I have to say that through the Unidiversity Program, we have expanded the opportunities to also bring part of our communities from the region, from the tri-state. They look forward every year to come to Unidiversities to celebrate with Oxford these kind of festivities. I want to thank you, the Mayor, Villas-Naveley, for his support, and the City Council that always have been supporting us, and every single member of the Oxford community for such an enthusiasm for not only participated in the Unidiversity Program, but really creating for us a space of understanding and building that kind of intercultural community that we're looking forward to continue to expand. Thank you so much, and I hope to welcome everyone this Friday, September 22. We will have the pleasure to welcome Oxford Citizens for Peace and Justice to be part of our International Peace Parade, and you will see on our website the amazing diverse kind of performances that we will have this year for the celebration. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Can I just acknowledge the work? I mean, the Unidiversity Festival and Jackie have been synonymous for two decades, and Jackie and I both have kids who are the same age, and it's been a feature of our life. And Oxford's a small town, but it opened our town to a wider world, right in our Uptown Park. So I want to thank you for all the work that you've done to enrich our community, what make Oxford so special, and yes, so your impact has been pretty immeasurable through that festival and all the other things that you've done. So thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Okay, at this time, anyone wishing to address council about items that are not on tonight's agenda, or if it is on the consent agenda, this would be your time to come forward, give us your name and where you live for the record, and we will listen to you for five minutes. Seeing no one jumping up, I will close public comments and move to the consent agenda. Can we have a motion to approve it, please?
It's all moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items that councillors would like removed? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Close, thank you. Consent agenda is approved. We'll move then to resolutions, and you can read the first one.
A resolution of council supporting the submission of a grant application for Ohio Public Works Commission Issue One funds to be used for the design and reconstruction of the storm sewer conduit on Bottom Road.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mike, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. We have about 700 feet of 48-inch storm conduit that runs along Bottom Road, roughly south of Shadowy Hills, somewhat between the Mallett Entry Drive and the Jaeger Entry Drive. This conduit's in poor condition, it's galvanized, and is deteriorated, it's just at the end of its useful life. This is in our capital improvement plan, and we think this would be a good candidate for funding from Ohio Public Works Commission. So a condition of applying for that funding is a resolution of support from the City Council. So we ask for your approval tonight so that we may apply for this funding for a potential project.
Super, thank you very much, and thank you for looking for those additional funding sources. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, discussion by council? Be right about? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Resolution is adopted, and we will move then to ordinances, and we have a couple on first reading, and you can start with the first one.
An ordinance amending the future land use map of the Oxford Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan from rural to campus for three parcels of land totaling 6.72 acres located in the Oxford Township, addressed as 525 North Campus Avenue outside the northern perimeter of the Oxford corporate limits.
Okay, welcome, Sam.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and council members. I'm bringing a recommendation from planning commission tonight regarding an annexation and future land use and hotel project. You have seen this several times over the past few months, and so this is similar to the Mary Day Park discussion in regards to the type of request that it is. It's setting the vision for a particular section of land that had not been previously categorized because it's outside the current city limits. So by doing this designation, it allows the vision to be set so that the regulatory framework can be put in place, so that the project can be properly designed, which has already started through the process, and you'll be seeing that over the next month or two as well. So this would be changing from what is currently a rural designation for these three parcels of land, just north of the City of Oxford, on North Campus Avenue, Morning Sun Road. From rural to campus designation, doesn't mean it's Miami University-owned, but it sets kind of the vision for how the buildings are spaced and how the land is developed so that through the regulatory process, the zoning can be set as well, which we intend to be general business with a hotel conditionally-use approval as well.
Coming after that. Thank you, Sam. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, councillors have any questions or comments?
I have a really easy one. Just for clarification's sake, so this is on the record, the designation for this going from rural to campus does not cause that land to be non-taxable.
That's correct, it does not.
Okay.
Dave?
Yeah, I'm just, this is kind of new for us, for those people haven't followed this before. We're trying to kind of hew our zoning changes much more to our comprehensive planned land use map, and thus amending the land use map to, you know, to meet our goals. Our, these categories are both about form and also function, right? And so I wonder if you could just, it was in the report, but campus is a little bit more about the form, you know, and it didn't necessarily, as I recall, it doesn't necessarily envision commercial uses, it was mainly about campus buildings, educational buildings, but it was also about the layout. And so I was kind of, if you could just talk through, I know you presented it as a planning commission, but why was campus the right designation? Even though, for example, a hotel's a commercial use, didn't 100% line up with the description of the land use.
Sure. Yeah, one of the other alternatives could have been what's considered Employment Corridor, which is what's along Morning Sun Road in the vicinity. Employment Corridor has a little bit more dense spacing and sometimes smaller buildings. The campus designation sets the form for more of an institutional-scale building, which at this point, we happen to know a hotel's proposed, so that fits well with the vision and allows the general business zoning district to be regulated more tightly than what otherwise would be. So you're right, Council Pretheridge, the spacing of the buildings and the size of the buildings with a campus designation is a closer fit than like an Employment Corridor or even any other of the commercial districts or a mixed-use district.
So it's a little bit more of a vision than the zoning, which then regulates the uses.
Yeah, the future land use is not actually a regulatory set of framework, it's a guide for zoning, it just happens to be that we're doing these almost together or parallel.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. This will come back at our next meeting as a second reading when we will take votes. You may read the second.
An ordinance approving a second final subdivision application and record plat for South Forest Edge, Section One, with conditions.
Okay, welcome back.
Thank you. This is, this may be a familiar one as well, this one actually has been approved before, it expired, so this goes along with a recent discussion about sanitary sewer investment for a project on 27 South, near South Point Parkway. So this is the land dominium side, the 36 units on the north side of Lake Forest Drive, and it had expired previously, so by approving it again, it's the exact same plat that would allow it to move forward for development.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, councillors have any comments? So it's the same exact thing that we already passed. All right.
It's been moved.
Yep.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 3697, supplemental budget ordinance number five, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2023.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
It's all moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, thank you very much. Heidi, welcome.
Good evening. I have no changes tonight for this ordinance. Again, this is the funding needed to fund the recent agreement for the Lake Forest Drive sanitary sewer construction agreement.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? It's on second reading. Okay, councillors have anything new?
I just want to provide a little context for anybody's watching, because there are a lot of moving pieces to this, but basically that we've had development approved out on 27 South, ready to go, but it was not served by sewer, and that was one of the conversations. So in our last meeting that we talked about a lift station enabling that area to be sewed, the TIF funding enables the payers for the lift station, which then enables, that's why the subdivision is coming back. So they're all little disparate pieces, but trying to resolve the issues to enable new housing to move forward, which we've approved and aligns with our goals. So again, this is just another thank you to staff for working with the developer to find something that was a good agreement everyone could live with, so this can hopefully move forward.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions? You may call the roll.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. And the ordinance is adopted, we'll move to number two.
An ordinance by Oxford City Council authorizing the city manager to take all action necessary, including but not limited to the negotiation and execution of a contract to purchase the real estate located at 601 West Chestnut Street, which property is approximately 1.1390 acres at a cost of $280,000 plus estimated closing costs of $4,000 for total cost not to exceed $284,000, and to utilize $97,750 of Community Development Block grant funding and $186,250 of American Rescue Plan Act funds in making the purchase.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Jessica?
I have nothing additional from last time.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, councillors have any further questions or discussion? All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. This ordinance is adopted, and we will move to number three.
An ordinance amending the Oxford Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan to include the Climate Action Plan entitled "Towards a Sustainable, Resilient Future" as a formal sub-plan.
Okay, and is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, thank you very much. Jessica?
Again, nothing further this evening, but if you're able to answer questions.
Thank you very much. And is there anyone from the public who would like to address? Come on up, just give us your name and where you live, and we'll give you five minutes.
Sure. Brayden Fuster, I live at 5480 Brown Road. I'm here to educate Oxford and the council on the impact of public transit on our environment. I expect you've heard the famous Mark Twain quote, "It's not what you don't know that gets you into trouble, it's what you know for certain. It just ain't so." I expect that everybody knows that public transit is good for the environment, but here in Oxford and Butler County, it just ain't so. In fact, it's pretty bad. VCRTA buses are less efficient than every car on the road. In 2019, they got less than 11 passenger miles per gallon of fuel. In 2020, they got less than six. In 2021, they got less than eight. That's less than a fully loaded dump truck. I drove my Ford Focus up here tonight, I got 35 passenger miles per gallon while doing so. When my family drives their minivan, we're getting 88 passenger miles per gallon, that's eight times better than public transit here in Oxford. We know this because they tell the Federal Transit Administration this data, so this is public federal data source I'm getting this information from. There's also peer-reviewed science published a paper in 2018 by the Transportation Research Board, the National Academy's press, found that VCRTA buses were about three times worse than the typical car. So as this body considers the adoption of this plan, I'd here, I'm here to ask for an amendment to remove all aspects of this plan advocating for public transit. Why would we continue to do something that exacerbates the problem? Some might say that these buses are, well, what about, what about the cost of a car? What about electric buses? In 2021, VCRTA got $5.48, they spent $5.48 per passenger mile. The Department of Energy estimates that cars cost about 58 cents per mile. That's gas, maintenance, insurance, capital, cost, depreciation, the works. So we could simply provide a car to anyone that needs it for 10 times less than what we're currently spending on the buses. For those who can't drive, we can hire an Uber at $2 a mile, much less than the costs that we're spending today. What about electric buses? Well, we already see electric cars on our road today, and electric buses will not be more efficient than these. We don't have the ridership to make it so due to structural problems inherent in transit, such as frequency and the first and last mile challenge. As an aside, my hometown of Chattanooga's had free electric bus service in their downtown since the 90s. I expect you haven't heard of it because the buses aren't exactly brimming with people. Electric buses cost twice as much as conventional diesel buses, and we know that VCRTA cannot deliver on major capital projects, so I don't expect electric buses anytime soon. The Chestnut Street multimodal station was supposed to open in May of 2021 at a $9 million cost. It's now estimated to be over $24 million, and it, and well over a year away, I drove by today, there's no signs of a bus garage down there. We also need to think about modal shift. If we get rid of the buses, most of our riders in town are students, they're going to walk, they're going to bike, they're going to scoot, some might take a car, and all these will be better for our planet. So let's end hypocrisy and the wishful thinking and do what's right for our planet, end support for these buses, and make an amendment to this plan. I'm looking for bold leadership tonight, we don't have time to wait. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? Okay, thank you very much, and we have, let me follow my notes here. There's been no changes, there's no more public conversation, councillors. Any discussion?
I guess I'd say two things. One is that sometimes things become like, not that they're foregone conclusions, but we've been building up for them for so long that they seem like the logical next step, and it's not a radical step. But our 2008 Comprehensive Plan made no mention of climate change whatsoever, and it was not very long ago, it was not particularly an agenda of the City of Oxford. It's been the last few years the council's prioritized climate, I mean, for the scientific reasons, and all you got to do is look in the newspaper to see, if you read the newspaper about the world that we're facing. It can, it can be a source of anxiety, the news this summer was pretty daunting from all over the world, and the changes are discouraging, but what our Comprehensive Plan and our Climate Action Plan show is that there's a pathway forward to neutrality that's within our grasp, and that we can A, achieve neutrality along our goals of 2045, and B, we can become more resilient in the face of the change that's already happening. So it's a, it's a radical step that will pass kind of reluctantly, quietly. I would say that for us to get to this step was a huge effort. If you look at that list of the people who contributed to this, it was a really long list of people over multiple years, students in the IES program, staffers across departments, members of the public, the climate action, we had a task force that then became a steering committee. This is, this is a people's plan, and why I know it's a people's plan is, I could ask Jessica this question, yeah, how many dollars of consulting did this plan cost us? The answer is zero. You know, this was written by people for the community, it had staff time and the investment of staff time, including Rena, a new staff hire, we had staff in terms of helping us design this, but this, this came at great efficiency to the City of Oxford. You know, I'm really proud of this first sub-plan, which looks beautiful, it's pretty indistinguishable from a consultant-based product that could have, what might this have cost if we had put this on the, what do you think, Sam, a plan like this would cost? Yeah, so...
Twenty or thirty thousand.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'd be lucky if we could get it for that. How much did our company call, that was a much bigger effort. So anyway, I, I want to thank all the people that, that put their time into, into it. And now what I hope is that citizens take the baton, because the city can do a lot, we're working really hard on renewable energy, we're looking at all kinds of things, but in order to achieve neutrality is really going to have to be a community effort, it's a matter of the cars that we drive and how we power our houses and how we choose to get around, when our furnace dies. So anyway, it's, it's up to people, but we are working forward, just to put this on your calendars, November 15th, we're going to do kind of an electrification and efficiency fair, where you can come out and learn more about what does it mean to get a heat pump, what's an electric car, talk to Mayor Snively about his electric car, talk about all the benefits that are in the Inflation Reduction Act that can really help offset the, the cost of these things. So we individually can make our own individual commitments to neutrality, and it seems really daunting, how do I make my house net zero over the course of the next 15 years with a plan? Most of us can get there. So again, thanks to all the staffers, all the volunteers on this, and thank you to advanced, in advance for all people in Oxford who helped make this happen, so thanks.
So our decision is not really on the plan, but whether to put the plan into our Comprehensive Plan so that it's all in one place. Is there further discussion? Thank you, David. Call the roll.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted, we'll move to number four.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 3701, establishing salaries and certain benefits for salaried and hourly, full-time, and year-round, part-time employees within the service of the City of Oxford, Ohio, paid from January 1, 2023, through December 31, 2023, to reflect an additional 2% wage increase for certain employees who are not under a collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, thank you very much. Hi, Jessica, any changes?
No changes this evening, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, councillors? So this basically brings our non-union employees up to where the rest of the employees are. I would entertain... I would entertain a roll call.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. We'll move to number five.
An ordinance accepting the recommendation of the Planning Commission and approving a combined preliminary and final plan development application of the Oxford Cottage Community along Hester Road in the city of Oxford with conditions.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you very much. Hi, Sam.
Hello again. There is one change to this one. Based on the conversation at the last meeting, Councilor French, I think, asked for a response to one of the comments from one of the neighbors about some screening. We added that, and then we found out that there was a very good conversation between Ms. Mueller and the neighbor, and that's actually not necessary. So we added it, and now I'd like to request it being taken back out. And what we would like to do is just see how it goes with the navigation of the headlights around the project. And if necessary, that will be added. And that would cut some costs from the project if it didn't have to be added at the beginning. So I'd like to request to remove that and put it like it was in the first reading, which would be without the fence.
Okay, so this... Can you give us a page number? This is 172 is where it starts.
175 is what was... is the revised ordinance. So we would be... My request to you would be to remove condition six.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you. Counselors, first, I guess if you heard Sam and would like to go ahead, maybe it would be an order to make a motion to amend the ordinance by deleting item number six under section one.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? So the neighbor is okay? And supports that?
Yes.
All right.
My question is, if at some point it was no longer okay, who would bear the cost of adding in that screen?
It would be the cottage community, because the way the lease is that we have with the cottage community, that it is their responsibility to do all the maintenance and installation and upkeep.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so this is a voice vote. I'm looking at Chris. Amendments can have voice votes? Yeah. So we're going to have a voice vote on the amendment, which is to delete number six out of section one. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion by council on this?
Help me remember. How long have we been talking about this? I was looking at the case. I was trying to figure out from the case history.
I think in principle, about five years. But for this site, about three.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, just to mark another major milestone. This is the last major milestone that comes before council, right? And after this, it's building permits, and away it goes.
Yeah, yeah.
So again, thanks to everyone, you know, especially Ms. Mueller, but staff, the city's role in purchasing and leasing this took a lot of work, five years. I can't wait to see ground broken on affordable housing at this site. So thanks to everybody for...
It's good to see something tangible happening.
Yes.
So we appreciate your work on it. All right. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes.
This ordinance is adopted. And we will move then to announcements and communications. And the first item is a discussion that was requested by Councilor Prather and myself, having to do with standalone short-term rentals and housing affordability, neighborhood stability. So I will turn it over to David to lead this.
All right, thank you. And I just wondered, this is something probably that if people live in Oxford and they look around their neighborhood, they may see one of these. This was a house. Ben lived in this house, and someone lived in this house before Ben. Today, it sits empty most of the time, and then it's rented out some percentage of the time. This is an Airbnb. And if you're wondering, why is this house that used to have a neighbor vacant, except for when it has out-of-state license plates on some weekends? If you look it up on Airbnb, you can find it there at $650 a night. Or this other house, Blue Bell Hill, which is kind of a neighbor on Fairfield Road, for $486 a night. Okay, so, and if you, you know, if you get on Airbnb and you search for whole houses, you know, I don't want to share a bedroom. I want a whole house. You can see that many units that maybe once upon a time had a neighbor living in them. Now are investment properties rented out to people on weekends. And, you know, former councillor Doug Ross's house is an Airbnb. So, well, you know, at one level, this is a good thing. We say we're pro-hotel. We want to house people in Oxford. It's nice to be able to serve the parents who are coming, and they don't need to go to Mason. But for the last few years, realizing that short-term rentals were an issue, and council at the time, and this was about three years ago, was concerned about a couple of different things simultaneously. First was the idea, these things have been happening informally, and we should codify them, bring them out from the shadows and codify them. Worried about a few different things. One was kind of the neighborhood, the nuisance impacts of like people coming and going. It's a kind of a commercial use in your neighborhood. And that's what the Planning Commission got started with. But at the same time, we were also concerned about the potential for displacement, which is not only is it people coming and going, but in the shifts to it becoming an investment property, you lose your neighbor who used to be a person who might have kids in the driveway, and you would say hello to them, to an investment property. And these are not just investment properties like other rentals. They're kind of like investment properties on steroids. I mean, these houses do the math on $400 a night or $750 a night. So we passed this code. And it's relatively short, but one of the things I wanted to highlight, which is when we came up with the code, or council came up with the code, one was, we did this as what they call, and this I'm going to go through a little bit of arcana on the planning, as accessory uses. And there are accessory uses, and we're going to diagram in a minute on their principal uses. An accessory use is like a shed on your property. You store your lawnmower in it. The shed is accessory to the principal use of your house. So at that time, we came up with a code that said the principal use to which the transient guest lodging, and that's what we call Airbnb or short-term rental, is associated must be one that's permitted in the underlying zoning district. Okay, fine. We also said that, okay, to try to control the number of coming and going, we set a maximum number of days not to exceed 90 days. That was a pretty generous number, but some people were really relying on this for their income, so we set it high. But you do the math on, if you could rent out your property for $500 for 90 days, that's a lot of money, okay? And that we did at that time say that, well, if you wanted to exceed these, you can also go through this existing conditional use process that we have for bed and breakfasts. This doesn't require permissions from your neighbor or going through any kind of process through council. You can do this as part of your property rights, as long as you fit with this. If you wanted to go beyond this, you'd have to go through the conditional use permit process. That was, and, you know, and this was premised on the idea that we've got principal uses, like your residential use, living in a house, and the accessory use, which is like the shed that's accessory to the house. It's incidental and secondary to the principal use. So to me, you know, as I was watching this house, and then another house, and then another house go from owner occupancy into short-term rentals, I'm wondering like, well, isn't this against our code? Like, is the enforcement hammer going to come down on these properties? And so, you know, what I asked the question then is, you know, I raised this in our staff retreat. Well, like, why are we not enforcing this? And what became clear in that time is that there was a kind of a difference of opinion between what I think council thought it was adopting in terms of permitting an accessory use, meaning you can rent out portion of your house, like your bedroom, or, you know, a mother-in-law suite. Or you could rent out your house, but a portion of the time. But I think I understood that to mean, like, you couldn't run an Airbnb that was called standalone, that displaced the purpose of the use. I think there is a difference of opinion between what council thought and the code and legal staff interprets it. And so as I understand from staff, and they can clarify, you know, the answer we got back is that, no, our current code does not prohibit standalone Airbnbs. That as long as you operate this for less than 90 days, it's an accessory use, and you're fine. So this is why these haven't been enforced. And this is why, over time, we've seen, even in the time of this code being enforced, even in the time of this year, between raising this decision in January, I've seen houses advertised on billboards, investment potential. Why this is a problem, we could argue, okay, these properties, they're well-maintained. They're quiet. They make good neighbors. Sometimes it's nice not to have somebody live next door. But seeing if it takes us five years before we've even broken down on an affordable unit to lose units to affordable or moderate-income, to low or moderate-income people in our neighborhoods, it's a net loss. We're like falling behind before we're even catching up. So my question to council is this. If we care about housing affordability and neighborhood stability, do we want to clarify this code? And I think it's only a few lines of code that basically makes quite explicit that, no, this applies only to accessory uses that are secondary to a principal use. You can't, you know, this is like, you can have a shed with a lawnmower in it, but if you start using your whole property to store lawnmowers, it's not a residential use anymore. The accessory use has taken over the principal use. There's some confusion about this, and hence, some of the animals are out of the barn. But we could close the barn door by saying, no, this code is, it has to be secondary to a principal use. And we could say, what does that mean? For example, a principal residence. You know, for example, do we want to permit, for example, I know this house that was Ben's was bought by parents who rented it to their kids at Miami, and then after the kids were done, now it's just an Airbnb. Like, can you have a second home and justify it? I mean, all these things drive up costs that make houses unaffordable. And in doing so, do we want to channel it so that if someone wants to operate a standalone Airbnb, that it's really super clear to them that they can only do it through the conditional bed and breakfast process? And as a conditional use, it means your neighbors kind of have a say in the process, and they're worried about... So to me, I think what we're talking about is a few lines of code that could be really cheap, and they could save us from losing houses that once had neighbors and were once affordable to moderate-income people any further. So that's a question for me that I wanted to ask the council. So I'll stop there.
So I support Dave's comment. And at the time that this came up originally, I was on Planning Commission, and I was chair of Planning Commission, and it was our clear intent at that time, from my recollection, not to have standalones. In fact, we had a discussion with someone who lived on Fox Run, who, former councillor, who lived across from a house and found out that it had been sold for a B and B only. And it was, in his view, ruining the neighborhood because they were having big wild parties there with a lot of cars. And it changed the whole nature of what he said. Hey, this was a neighborhood overlay. We weren't supposed to have this kind of a thing, and now all of a sudden it's there. So it was in the mind, certainly, of Planning Commission, and I believe it was in the mind of council. But as it was written, apparently, it didn't quite do what those individuals thought that it was going to do. So the question, I think, before council is, do we care about that? And is that something that we want to fix?
Definitely do care about it for all the reasons already stated.
Okay.
I guess now's the time for questions to figure out which direction I want to go. One would be, because I was there for all of this too, but it's been a while. I'm trying to remember. So one of the things we have is a short-term rental tax. Sorry, I never speak into this. It goes to a housing trust fund in which we can try to make up for housing losses with this. And I'm trying to remember what the... Does the bed and breakfast go to the hotel tax?
We collect 6%, and half of that money goes to Enjoy Oxford. The other half goes into the Housing Trust Fund. As of recently, let's say, the first nine months or eight months, we brought in about $40,000 in this fund. So the question I have, though, you know, and I understand David's concern, Bill's concern, and everybody, but one thing you said, you know, we also, and I can't remember your exact words, you know, if a person wanted to rent out their house, you know, like several people have done. I mean, our former finance director used to do that. I have a neighbor that had done that. Probably won't do it again. But, you know, okay, that's an example. But if you go to someone that's bought a house and then does it all the time, I get your concern there. But, you know, you talked about a couple of simple lines. But our big concern is compliance, because, you know, if everyone followed the rules, if men were angels, we wouldn't need laws. And so there's going to be a big compliance issue that we need to keep in mind when we do this. We're only collecting about $40,000. And David, you know, provided some examples. But if you get online and look at the Airbnb, there's, I don't know, at any given time, maybe, what, Sam, 20 houses or more listed in Oxford?
We have around 50 now, and over half of those are fully approved and licensed. I really think this has been going on in Oxford for decades. It really hasn't been since big data has become, you know, the sharing economy and access to the information where it's more, we're more aware of it. I think changing the code is possible. I think the simplest thing would be to reduce the number of days. But I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of variables here. I think some people do, that are doing this currently, do use it as supplementary income to help pay their mortgage. So there is that.
But then it's owner occupying.
It is, and there are a handful that I think parents have bought, and they use it as a second home, maybe when they're visiting their student. And so I think code regulation, policymaking has gotten a lot more sophisticated since these have become more, we've become more aware of them. And I think using land use and zoning regulation to deal with some of the nuisance issues is maybe not the best approach. And I think parking and noise and trash and other kinds of code enforcement things are probably a little bit more of a direct application. I personally don't think that Airbnbs are causing a major issue. The number has actually reduced since before COVID. We had around 100, and then I think during the economic changes, some people dropped out of the market. It's hard to tell whether it was causation or not. We did have some people that didn't want to deal with the regulation of having to get the licenses, permits, inspections. And so I think that may be possibly accomplished when your goal's there, if your goal is to reduce the number that are affecting, that are taking potentially away housing units. Some of the houses that are being rented out are really above what our housing study has shown would be for a working family even. So I'm not sure that that's actually removing a housing unit from someone who's greatly in need. So there's a lot of factors. So regulating what is done behind closed doors is, I think, one of the biggest challenges for staff. So yes, you could certainly change the code, and I think the simplest thing would be to reduce the number of days, less than 90. And that would get us closer to the point of not having a business-type investment. But getting access to knowing when it's rented. Right now, the data that we're using through our software provider is using the advertising available data. We don't know the actual use data. And there is data available for that, but I don't know how much. We wouldn't get into those, into that personal business. So if we can see that there are nuisance impacts like parking, noise, trash, those kinds of things that are affecting the character of a neighborhood, then I think that would be a little bit more of a direct type of application. We can continue to monitor the compliance that we do have and report back periodically. And as we get more of these certified, licensed, and approved, as you heard, there's been a fairly significant, I think, revenue generation for equality with the hotels as far as lodging tax goes. So I think that, and that will go into the Housing Trust Fund as well. So there potentially is some compensation there. So one of the ones that you showed there on the slide actually is going through a transaction right now to a new owner who is not interested in doing that. So that, so there are changes that do happen. But I appreciate the question. But I appreciate the question. I think it's good to discuss publicly. We continue to report periodically on it. I do owe you an overall report that I promised a few months ago, so we can do that.
Can I ask a question while you're up there? For the 50% approximately that aren't in compliance, are they mostly new ones to the market?
Yeah, they're new ones or they're transactions that have happened. Sometimes people keep an advertisement out there or a listing, and it's not actually being used, so we don't actually have any knowledge. There's not been any complaints. It's just sitting out there on an advertisement. And so that's the data that we use called, the software service we use called MuniRef through GovOS just simply looks at the publicly advertised data of available dates. So we don't actually know if there's any use there. We have gotten a handful of complaints where someone like City Manager mentioned in a neighborhood might notice a change and ask about it. And so we followed up with those folks and given them some education. And in some cases, they just have decided to no longer do that.
Could I ask another one, slightly different? For somebody who's using a home in any case as an Airbnb, what about the conditional use for bed and breakfast would restrict that use as a typical Airbnb?
Yeah, there's some decision criteria, I think, that we put in there which would give power to Planning Commission and council to determine for that particular neighborhood, is this making it a business, so to speak, significant enough of a change that would negatively affect the character of the neighborhood? For example, if you had a neighborhood that was on more of a collector or arterial street where you have higher traffic and not as that kind of close, quiet atmosphere, it may be a little bit more acceptable in that kind of location where it's more of a commercial type of context. And, you know, a quiet cul-de-sac, maybe not so much. And so I think the criteria that are within the conditional use code that was adopted, which actually hasn't been tested since it was put in place, I think that would give council and Planning Commission the ability to further restrict it, or not even approve it even.
And is the tax situation different between the bed and breakfast and the?
It is not, no. It's just based on a night stay like a hotel would be.
And do we have any way to check whether people are going over the 90 days?
Not currently. There is a data service that we could purchase. Those of you there on council, at the time we did the original research with a now departed Miami professor who's moved to another university, but it was using some data that he had access to, that purchased on our behalf, that did have the number of days in it. The software we use now is only looking at the advertising of the available dates, not the actual stays.
Okay. And are these equally able to be rented out as full-time Airbnb if they're in a neighborhood overlay?
Yes, the, under the current family definition, under the current zoning code, which has not been revised, yes, there is a limit, no more than two unrelated. And it's also the property maintenance code. So a lot of the houses couldn't have a large number anyway because of the square footage of the bedrooms. So between the neighborhood overlay, which has an additional restriction of no more than two unrelated, and the square footage limits of bedroom spaces, which is because of kind of our student rental culture, it is somewhat difficult to have large numbers legally. So if we get complaints on that, we can follow up on that. And we actually haven't had any complaints on that. And the handful that we have had have just decided to no longer do it anymore.
Okay.
I'm talking too much, so if anybody else wants to step in?
I would like to.
I was just going to make a general comment. I wrote a complete short-term lodging code 10 years ago for another community. We've just taken a step back in time a decade. The conversation is exactly the same. I don't know if you saw the New York Times on Sunday, but they're having a problem with people renting out apartments for Airbnb staying vacant. I know this, we can write code, legal code, not computer code. And we can try to address whatever problems you believe need to be addressed. But I would also caution you that this marketplace dynamic is really a dynamic one. And when individual property owners buy property, we don't know what their intentions are or what they may become. So I think that it's just a problematic area right now that is evolving. And the marketplace is very, very fluid. And, but I'm not sure that it's going to be a few tweaks of code because once we start tweaking, it goes over and over again. But I do want to address the bed and breakfast question. Certainly, bed and breakfast is more akin to an owner occupied because multiple people who are unrelated live there with the permission that's granted through the conditional use. And, you know, in addition, there's been discussions about additional hotel space coming in that might have some impact. You've heard me say this before, as somebody who's a consumer of space, when I want to come here because my daughter's a student, I don't even try because it's just very difficult. So there's a lot of challenges out there. And from the law director's perspective, you make the policy. If you say, go do this, I think that we can write something. But I suspect that we'll probably have to go back and tweak it. That's my lesson of a decade.
Sure. So I would say that whatever, I mean, we're so anxious to have affordable housing that we looked at rezoning one of our parks to introduce housing. You know, we're buying pieces of property. I bet some revision of the code would be less costly if it saved one house that is currently an owner occupied, moderate income house from going into the investment market. I think the return on that investment would be high. Because I think that, you know, just to clarify again, some of them are about quality of life issues. But most of the three houses that are within two blocks of my house are quite quiet. You know, but that's the problem. No one lives there. There are Airbnbs that are empty, except on big weekends. And we could tinker with the number of days. But even if you reduce from 16 to 90, if you're charging $750 a night for 60 days, that's $45,000 in gross revenue on that house. Ben's never going to be able to afford it by, no one's going to be able to, that house is lost to owner occupancy as long as that market is what it is. I just think like, I'd be happy to write a line of code. And where, I mean, at this point, it would be like a call for legislation. I think a single line would be a cheap fix to at least clarify. Because enforcement's one thing, but we've got a pretty tight ecosystem. And if all the realtors realize this is no longer permissible, then they're not going to throw up on billboards, investment opportunity. And that might save a house. So I just would hate to lose another neighbor to investment properties. That's what I like to do.
So I am super sympathetic. This is something I paid attention a lot to. We've talked about it with hotels. One thing that's very, very tricky, because you can talk about displacement and the trickle-down market effects to lower-level income housing. You have to weigh that against the revenue we bring in and how we direct that to low income. So like we mentioned, the cost of these Airbnbs, they're so high. It suggests they're not necessarily displacing what would otherwise become affordable housing. Right? It's mostly higher end. And so in that case, it affects the market still because there are effects at multiple levels because of market demand. But in general, if they're higher price and we gain revenue from that, that we can target specifically to those who really need it, affordable housing, not higher-level housing, it might do more good, but it's a really hard, difficult game to play. In addition to all the other stuff, including parties and everything else.
The other, to the extent that Sam says we haven't had many complaints and there's not, I mean, you can't argue it's a problem because it's quiet. So, and then the other aspect of it would be, what impact are these two new hotels going to have on the market for them? I mean, it may be something that we could wait on and watch too.
So yeah, I guess I just feel like if you and I were part of the process and thought our code had intended to do one thing and it didn't do it, then there was some miscommunication in the intent. That if we were, that a line of code could clarify the intent of the existing code and at least remove confusion. Yeah, again, given that I was asked to vote on rezoning a park, I'd rather close this than pull. It's cheaper.
You point on this?
Okay, go Glenn.
What are we trying to solve with this particular legislation that you're bringing up? I have an answer for it. This is my theory, Glenn's theory, Glenn's theory alone. Airbnb exists because there's a desire for high-end hospitality. In Oxford, period, there's not enough hospitality to support the amount of, I'll call it tourism, that shows up on the weekends. And specifically, high-end hospitality. We had a couple of things come before councils, specifically Massler Autobody, I think was going to turn into high-end hospitality. There was a couple of projects that were going to be out on 27 that looked to be also high-end hospitality. I'm not exactly sure if the hotel that is coming in from the township is going to be quote-unquote high-end. But Airbnb is typically catered towards high-end hospitality. If Oxford has investors that produce high-end hospitality, this problem sorts itself out. So I'm not discounting legislation discouraging acquisition of single-family housing for high-end hospitality. But what I'm saying is there's a lot more ways to skin this cat. And I believe if we solve the problem, then the symptoms will go away. And you have described a lot of the symptoms. But the problem is Oxford doesn't have enough high-end hospitality beds to suit the people that are coming into town. They don't want to sit, or they either can't get into our hotel rooms or don't want the hotel rooms because of a bad experience for whatever reason. And they choose to go to a home because they've had a better experience. That's the only reason why those things are commanding the prices that they have up there right now. If there are options that appear and can provide a similar quality experience, then those things will end up being outcompeting. And they will revert back to single-family housing. So that is another option. I don't know if legislation is going to help that, but I do know more hospitality beds can definitely add pressure to, I guess, the unraveling of the symptoms that you're describing.
Do either of our other councillors want to chime in?
Sure. Yeah, I think I am in a similar boat to kind of what Jason was saying. Because like I was stockrealtor.com every day. And I think I've, and this is anecdotal, but I think I've seen one house listed that I went then on Airbnb and was like, oh my gosh, they're trying to sell that house and it's sitting empty and they're listing it on Airbnb. And it was miles above what I would call affordable. So I do agree that I think a lot of the houses that are being purchased with intent to open a business are maybe not what I would call like low-income or accessible housing. But, and I agree, I, whatever we do. Because I do, you know, David, I appreciate the commission wrote this code. I don't, you know, I want commissions to feel like what they do matters. I think that's really important. So I think twofold. One, I want to make sure that we aren't losing, that we're not changing code and then end up losing whatever existing funding source we do have into the housing fund. Because I agree with Jason, I would like to see that maintained at minimum. But I wonder if we're talking about some of these code proposals, does it make sense to take it to planning and say, this originated in planning? What did we intend to write? What would our recommendation be? And then it can come back to council as a planning commission recommendation? I don't know if that makes more sense than us trying to legislate down if that comes up from a commission.
Well, I think, I mean, what we could do is call for legislation, and then that legislation comes up through the planning commission with a recommendation. You know, I mean, that would.
Or you could just refer the issue to planning.
Yeah. But I think rather, I mean, I guess it's also like, do we want to open up the code to rewriting? And do we have the bandwidth for that? Or is it a more targeted surgical thing that this is what we're asking for as a clarification that, you know?
And I have one more thing before I forget. The 90 days question, I would also, I think, I feel that data gap a little bit of like, we don't know if nudging that 90 days up or down is going to actually affect people. Like, are those big weekends getting us to 30 days, 45 days? So if we move it from 90 to 50, maybe we're doing squat. And I also would worry that maybe we're just kind of exacerbating the problem of the length of time those houses are sitting empty, right? If they can make bank off 30 days out of 365, then we're looking at a house that's sitting empty for an additional two months of the year as opposed to it's occupied three months of the year. So that was my other consideration when it comes to kind of code tweaking.
If I could just add to that before Amber, just specifically, is that okay? Sorry. I was just going to say, I agree with a lot of that. I wouldn't want to change the number of days because it might not change the actual categorical use of Airbnb. They might keep it, and then you just lose revenue that could have went to the housing fund. That's all I want to say. Sorry, Amber.
No, I think I support what Counselor French has said. I mean, when I think about our businesses, like the businesses uptown where people can afford to just have them and keep them empty, there's really no, not much leverage that we have to force them to do something with those spaces. And I wonder if something similar would happen with the housing, where they're wealthy enough to have purchased it, to own it, and can just take the tax write-off or whatever and keep them empty. And then we're not getting the taxes that can support the lower-income housing we're looking at. I think, I'm curious to know if there's something we can do to prevent further acquisition of housing for that purpose. But from what our law director said, again, we can't infer the intent of people purchasing housing stock, right, Sam?
If I may, I would just say that we also do some stalking on Realtor.com as well. Just from information of what's going on, we will try to reach out to realtors. Realtors do call us as well. So if we see that there's a Realtor maybe that's unfamiliar with the local regulation, we'll try to let them know so that they can disclose what the opportunities are to the buyer. And hopefully that will educate them because they don't always know to check first. The regulations that we have in Oxford are not real common in the region. So they might think, well, we'll make this purchase. And if it doesn't work out, then we can use it for that type of investment. So that's really about the only way that we could intervene is just through the education process. So it really comes down to the Realtor disclosing what they know. And most of them will do that, and so we do appreciate that. And with that comes some hesitation sometimes about whether they would go forward with it. We don't always know about those conversations.
Thank you.
So I guess, I appreciate the conversation. I guess, just as a decision point, to me, it feels like there's no legislation before us, but there could be a call for legislation. And I don't know if that takes a second. I mean, I guess I would, if it takes a second, and there's no second, then I'm the only person up who worries about it. You know, I would like to call for a surgical addition to our accessory. It's meant to be an accessory that distinguishes accessory from, that it be secondary and incidental to a principal use. And that principal use be, for example, a primary dwelling unit. You know, just to clarify the code.
Would you consider instead referring that to Planning Commission to allow them to talk about it and give it serious discussion and then come back to us?
I mean, I would defer to staff on what they think is best, whether, I mean, I think that Planning Commission is putting on its plate that I think a targeted thing, it's not like, hey, rewrite this thing, but we would like clarification. If we share the concern that standalone Airbnbs are, I mean, I know everybody's worried about affordable housing, but I think we also worry about housing at all levels, that we need housing. And even if it's upper, Vine Street used to be one last little bastion of owner occupancy in the Mile Square. And a lot of those houses, Jason Rex's house is now an Airbnb or a student rental. The Raveli's house is, I believe, is an Airbnb. So yeah, do we want to close the barn door on these things or not? And yeah, I think if it were targeted recommendation, yeah, what do you think? A call to legislation that's funneled through the Planning Commission, is it directive to the Planning Commission?
Let me ask a question though. If, whatever you might be suggesting for the change in the accessory use definition, would that eliminate an individual who owns their home but leaves for a weekend and rents it out?
No.
No.
It has, because it's as an accessory use, it's accessory to a principal use. And that principal use is the owner occupancy. So you can still rent your house out on the weekends. You can, if you go to cities that have affordability problems like DC, you can't rent a whole house. You can. You can rent a basement, you can rent a carriage house.
But you could even rent the whole house for a small period of time, but then the family moves back in.
It does not displace the primary use, the principal use. And that, to me, I, I would argue that our code already does that, because I don't think if, if you store the lawn mowers in the entirety of your property, it's no longer, the shed becomes the principal use.
Well, I guess it depends on how long you store it.
Yeah. Then you move the lawn mowers out. Anyway, so you, I, I think it's a surgical clarification of principal use versus accessory use, and doing that closes the barn door and further conversions to short-term standalones. I've taken up enough time, council's time.
All right. So what we need.
Can I ask one more question?
You can ask a question, but then we need to move toward a resolution of some kind, asking for a motion either to, to direct staff to do something here or to send it to planning and have that come back to us.
Yeah, I, my question would probably be suited for a planning conversation, so.
I think it should go to planning and door housing.
Okay.
That's where I lean as well.
Is there consensus?
On what the issues are and what the directive is? I mean, this is basically the question as a state, do we want to, A, clarify, the, the goal is to clarify and only permit them as conditional uses, and that's all I'm looking for.
I think I understand what, if you don't mind, I think I understand what your goal is. Would you mind articulating what the problem is? So that we can, if we need, at the planning commission level, if that's the direction you decide to go, we can use some data and research to support what, what we come back with.
Certainly, thank you. Can I just add, Glenn mentioned housing, and I think that's a great idea, too, because this is a housing issue as much, if not more, than it is planning. So I would love if we thought about that, too.
The one thing you need to be very careful about, when you start legislating rights being moved, removed from people, they get upset. And when you're dealing with people that are buying Airbnbs for profit, these people have money, and they will fight back. So just be careful of the unintended consequences. I mean, we already have a very large building sitting uptown because somebody doesn't like how we've been doing things. So just be careful about this kind of stuff. That's why I was like, planning, housing, make sure we have a lot of eyes looking at it so we can look at that, look at unintended consequences of any legislation. But the fix to this is to provide the actual need to the people that are buying these things, which is high-end hospitality.
I would entertain a motion to refer this issue to housing and planning.
Yeah, I, I move that we refer this to housing to, to clarify these questions, I mean, our code.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can we vote on a discussion? Yeah, thanks.
Okay. At this time, I will turn to remarks from council and staff, and I'll begin with City Manager Elliot.
Thank you. Well, this is kind of related to it, but I did notify council that Nancy Nix, the Butler County Auditor, will be holding a meeting at the courthouse on October 30th, Monday, from 7:00 to 8:30 to discuss the 2023 triennial real property update. As you know, the median property assessed value increase for the city of Oxford is 30%. There are 3,311 real property parcels in the city of Oxford. And I noted that the auditor also posted some time ago on Facebook, the top 10 sales in Oxford for July 2023. One of the houses, the assessed value that she had was off by 91.7%, and another house was off by 44%. So, you know, that's probably part of the issue is the increasing property value. So hopefully with these new housing developments, we have Al's Landing, which was purchased by JR Horton, and they've taken out nine building permits. We'll see some more housing, and then also with the agreement we'll be signing tomorrow since the finance part passed with CKC or Foreleaf, we'll see that project moving forward as well, too. So hopefully that will improve the housing stock, probably not for low-income housing, but certainly for medium and higher. But, you know, basically, the county auditor has a responsibility under the Ohio Constitution to basically assess real property, including land and any improvements, by uniform rule according to value, and that's what it's all about. So property values have gone up dramatically in Butler County and several other counties, and I welcome Auditor Nancy Nix coming and explaining the process to citizens.
I think that would be a good idea. Some of the houses in my neighborhood have been valued at amounts that no house has ever sold for in our neighborhood. So I would love to hear her talk.
Yeah, the rest of you will, too?
Yes. The other thing that I want to share with council, too, is the Ohio Whitetail Deer opening hunting date with Bone Arrow in our region is from Saturday, September 30th to Sunday, February 4th. The city, as you know, has a deer management program. We've had that program in place now, this is, will be our 15th year. The total permitted vag limit in our county is two, either sex deer, it used to be three, and also many years before was four when we first got into this program. So apparently they think that these types of programs are working. As you know as well, deer are donated to the Community Meal Center in Hamilton, which provides meals to the needy each week. And the processing cost for the donated deer is paid by the Community Meal Center with the grant funding from the state of Ohio. As you know, our goal is to restore the natural balance in our equal ecosystem and not to eliminate the whitetail deer. And we've had this program, like I said, for 15 years. We've certified, David Trelevan, who manages this program for the city, has certified 22 individuals to permit, issued permits to hunt on basically seven tracts of land, six are city-owned, and we also include the Oxford Country Club. So I just wanted to let the public know that that program will be started soon. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Nothing. Can I speak?
Chief?
Nothing.
Heidi? Chief?
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Or did Sam?
Nothing.
Okay. Jessica? Thank you. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Chris?
Thank you.
All right. Glenn?
Today is National Voter Registration Day. We had a gentleman, last council meeting, talk about today, and today has arrived. So I guess it is my turn to, once again, look at the younger folks out in the crowd and say, did you know you can register to vote here in Oxford and vote for Oxford issues while you're here? So if you haven't already, you should get out there, vote. The deadline to register to vote in order to vote in our election this year is, I believe, October the 10th, so you still have some time. But register to vote, get out there and make your voice heard. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Alex?
Seconding what Glenn said.
Okay, great. Amber?
Living Room Conversations is back at the Interfaith Center. We had a great conversation about Barbie. There's a conversation early in October, just go to their website. It's a Friday, they're all Fridays at noon, there's lunch provided. The next one in October is again on abortion rights, and then the one in November is on marijuana, and the election will have happened by then. Either way it goes, we hope to have a robust conversation, and we really do want people who hold different perspectives to come out. The conversations are not as enjoyable if everyone around the table views things the same way or more or less the same way. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Nothing for me tonight?
Thanks to council and staff for dedicating. We had a pretty short meeting going, and so thanks for the time on that conversation. I think it's an important one, tough to wrestle with, cities wrestle with this all over. Oxford lost a pillar of its community this week with the passing of Lisa Champa. As a person who's, was, I believe, older than Lisa Champa, she was, was premature, too young, every, I'm sure everyone knows Lisa Champa, Luna Blue, a philanthropic, Luna Cares, and entrepreneur among other sorts of things. So it's always hard when you lose a pillar of your community, but also a mother of children. And so my heart, and I believe all of our hearts go out to Bob Champa and, and their family. She was just an amazing person who did so much for our community. It just really shows you like what, like, we do the government thing and other people do the entrepreneurship thing, but it's not just about money. You know, she ran a profitable business that made Oxford better, and then took philanthropic proceeds to address cancer issues. So anyway, I just ask the people, people are already doing so, but that you keep their family in the hearts in this really difficult time. Oxford really lost a pillar this week.
Thank you, Dave. I was going to mention the same thing. And my, I can't even imagine what Bob is going through or what their children are going through. It's just so sudden and so unexpected. But she was a big pillar to our community in, in so many different ways, as you mentioned. So keep one another safe, and, you know, tell people you love, you love them while you got them, I think. Okay, I have nothing further, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.